Hi. Call tonight's meeting to order of the Norfolk School Committee for Tuesday, January 14, 2020. And as we start out every meeting, we read the mission statement, which is, "The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students through school, family, and community partnerships. We provide an education, inspires lifelong learners, and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world." Roll call, please.
Jennifer Nguyen.
Madora Champagne.
Jeff Kurt.
Paul Cochran.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingrid Lardie.
All right. A public comment, I don't believe we have any. I think we have just various presentations. So first thing we have is a donation, once again, which is in the amount of $1,285 for various items on here. So $500 for the Gretchen Sullivan Memorial Fund. Then there are 15, 50, 15, 130 for the Holiday Caring and Sharing. All of those are for HOD. Season of Giving, $500 for Freeman. And then Looters Environmental, 2019 donation for the entire district of $75, so in totality. The gifts this month total $1,285.00. Do we motion accept those as stated?
So moved.
For second?
Second.
Okay. Assuming no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for a very generous donation. Much appreciated, as always. All right. Moving on to my portion of the evening. Before we get to that, I just want to do a kind of quick aside for the committee and more so for our viewing audience. Obviously, budget discussions are foremost in everyone's mind going forward, as they should be. We're in the process now of working on a budget. So without going too much into it, I just want to point out, I think I'm stating this for the obvious for the rest of us on here. Anyone who has questions, every one of us, the five of us here, are members of the town, obviously, taxpayers of the town. So our tax bills are of a great concern to us. And we take that very seriously, that responsibility. So as we're going through that process, if anyone has questions regarding what we're spending, what our future plans are, anything involving the budget process, just how we develop the budget, we gave the presentation, that's available. But at any point, please reach out to any of us. There's a fairly good chance I won't know the answer, but I will find someone who does know the answer, and we'll do that. So I invite anyone who has questions, concerns, comments, suggestions, we will take them all. I don't know if anyone has anything they want to jump in and add to that real quick, or?
I could just add that all of our school committee meetings and our budget subcommittee meetings are posted on the town government website, and they're all open meetings. So if people are also welcome to come and participate, or at least observe those meetings live.
Yeah, it would be great to actually have a public here. I'm sure we have a loyal following at home. This is great. But it would be nice to have somebody actually here, because then it's even better to make these conversations face-to-face. But again, at any little times, if someone has a question, we're happy to answer those for folks. All right. So moving on, I believe we have another donation to discuss. Invite up, school committee alumni, who now has a beard. Despite that, we will take the donation. Jeff, you want to come up?
Sure.
Is it just you doing this, or you have Jonathan with you?
Jonathan, I knew was going to skate out of this. Just what he does with Community Supper, every time he's supposed to be over to, so people can acknowledge him, he never shows up.
Well done, Mark.
So, on behalf of the Community Supper, as well as the GAVL, we wanted to donate this to the schools. This is a defibrillator, as well as training pads and a carrying case. So we thought it'd be something that would be a huge benefit to the town, to the schools, and we hope that it serves itself well. That's it.
Excellent.
That's great.
So you're generous.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you very much, Jeff. Appreciate that.
Benefit students and adults, teachers or adults that visit here, which we have a lot of events.
And it's a portable defibrillator, so it can be taken on field trips, or for special events, or outside field days in the spring. So it's a great resource for us, and we greatly appreciate it. So thank you, Jeff.
Yes, very much appreciate it.
And to the Community Supper.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I made fun of your beard. Actually, I'm not, but that's okay.
Can I review the bullying policy?
Uh, no, we're not. I'm a temp.
I want to dig deep into this. This seems like an untapped subject.
Um, it's only because I can't grow cool and like that, that's why. So anyway, I think we belabor that enough, so we'll move on to Ingrid's portion.
You need to vote on that to accept that.
Oh, we have to vote for it, okay. All right. So do we actually have a vote to accept the defibrillator as presented?
So moved.
I'll second.
Second, and I assume no further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you again. Now we'll move on to Ingrid.
Okay. The first thing that we have on the agenda for tonight is a request from Toni Davis, who is our SAC program director. As we've talked about at various meetings, it is sometimes difficult for Toni to recruit staff to fill the open positions in SAC. One of the things she would like the committee to consider is for her to be able to offer a 10% discount to SAC employees who reside in Norfolk and whose children are eligible to attend the program. She thinks that will help with recruitment efforts, and also be a benefit to SAC employees. We did do some extensive research to see what other programs in the area do, and this is pretty much what the average program does. There's, we didn't find any that offer free tuition to employees anymore. We found several that didn't offer any benefit. And then the other programs that do offer a tuition discount, it ranged from 10% to 15%. So we are looking for a motion to be able to provide a discount to SAC employees with eligible children.
Do we know what the overall impact of this would be?
It would only be, it would be minimal, as far as the program, because they would have to reside in Norfolk for their kids to be eligible to participate. And most of our SAC employees whose children already are enrolled, who would be eligible are already enrolled. So it shouldn't impact dramatically.
Okay.
SAC is, the revolving fund is very healthy. They bring in significant tuition, so it wouldn't be a significant budget impact.
They're always packed.
What is?
They're always packed.
Yes.
There's always a long waiting list.
Yeah, there's a pretty deep waiting list, I think, for aftercare.
We're not losing, they're probably not losing anymore.
What's the tuition cost?
Depends if you're morning.
It depends on how many afternoons. Yeah.
It can vary.
It's an hourly, yeah. I don't, Todd, do you know the actual? I'd have to look.
If it's, I know just from experience, if it was one child, just the afternoons, it could be about five days a week, it's about maybe close to $300 a month. Does that sound right, Jeff, from your experience?
Yeah. I think it's like $20 a day.
According to our website, it's before school, is that right? $8 for the first child per hour, $7 for siblings. After school is $18.50 for the first child, $19.25 with optional snack fee, or $16.50 for siblings. And then vacation weeks, they offer care at $45 a day, which is the best deal in town.
Ever.
Yeah. Possibly in the country.
About how many eligible people are there?
I think right now, we only have two employees that would be eligible to have a student participate.
Yes, I would agree. I think the impact would be sort of minimal.
It is minimal financially, yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposed 10% tuition rate discount for school district employees.
I'll second. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Great.
I'm sorry, skipped over. The Special Education Parent Advisory Council is scheduled to present tonight. They have asked to move that until February, until their full board is able to attend. So we're going to move that agenda item to February. And then next, we have our curriculum directors. Anita Mecklenburg, the Director of English Language Arts and Social Studies, Vicky Saldana, who's the Director of Math and Science, and Lisa Altamhickey. And they are here to present the results of the last year's MCAS test. Come on up.
Should we move the box? Is that going to block it? Thank you, Todd.
It is portable.
Welcome. Thank you all for having us this evening. As Dr. Lardy said, we are here to present last spring's 2019 MCAS results, and collaboratively together, the three of us will be speaking on different parts of this presentation. So tonight, you're going to receive an overview of basically the Next Generation MCAS. This is our third year, basically, taking the MCAS on the computer. There is an MCAS scaled score range, different types of questions. The MCAS bring scores, which will go over the ELA state achievement results, the math state achievement results, the strengths and focus areas, and the MCAS data, following the same class for three years. So now that we have three years' worth of data, we can share with you, basically, you know, our current sixth grade class have actually taken that same test and following the same data for three years. It's always very interesting to see, especially this is the one that has been done on the computer as well. So the Next Generation MCAS assessment is, this is only one measure of a child's growth and achievement each year. The Next Generation MCAS assesses students' ability to learn from a variety of sources, think critically, make connections, and clearly explain their thinking. It's a snapshot of how we are doing as a district. It gives us data that allows us to reflect on the impact of our practices, plans for next steps, and ensures that students who might need extra support in their achievement are receiving it. The majority of students took the assessment on the computer in grades three through six. Favor tests are given for students who are in IEPs or 504s with documented accommodations. So there is basically the score in categories for MCAS. They are exceeding expectations, which is a scaled score range of 530 to 560, meeting expectations, which is 500 to 530, partially meeting expectations, which is 470 to 500, and not meeting expectations, which is 440 to 470. And I should also point out that all parents receive, basically, a parent report on how the individual child does in October with a letter from me summarizing those results. And it gives the parent clear guidelines on where their student actually falls and the range of other students. And I'm going to turn it over to Anita Mecklenburg, and she's going to give the ELA portion.
I might sit down. Is that okay?
I can do this.
Oh, that would be brilliant.
You have?
No, I can, I can look up there.
Okay.
So for the ELA, and please interrupt me if there's any questions, for the ELA, there's basically three different kinds of questions. There's a selected response, and the selected response could be a typical multiple choice, where they're selecting response, or it could be like you see on the right-hand side, where it's a drag-and-drop, and they'll have to drag and drop those, maybe in the order that retells the story more accurately. There's a constructed response, which is a paragraph answer. It'll, usually it's intended to be just one paragraph, and in the constructed response, they're not usually graded on their punctuation or their grammar, they're graded on the content of what they're writing about. And then there is an essay, which is a longer prompt, usually, that's asking our students to read one passage, and then read another passage, and then take information from both of those passages and write a lengthy response to that. And that response is scored on the content of what they've written, their ability to assimilate new knowledge in a testing environment, as well as grammar, punctuation, and those things as well. Those are all done on the computer, like Lisa shared with us earlier. So these are the scores from last year's third grade, so that will be this year's fourth grade class. And the green is the students who exceeded or met the expectations. The yellow is partially met, and the red is students who are not meeting the expectations at this time. And you'll see on the far right-hand side is how the state, am I in your way?
Oh, no, no, I'm okay.
Is how the state is doing. We're the next column over, so we're doing significantly better than the state. It's still, we'd like it to be higher, and so it's, we're over the state, which is our primary goal, and then we want to be growing. So they're nice scores, we would like them to be nicer, so we're working toward that end.
Yeah. This is the first time our third graders are taking this test and try and get on for the first time. So that is something that's completely new for them, you know, as well, just to keep that in the back of your mind.
Is there a separate breakdown for the percentage, or the number that both met and then separately exceeded?
Same question, yeah.
I just jumped ahead.
Yes. No, but we have that data separately. We were trying to make it not so overwhelming.
No, I was just curious, okay.
Yes, we can break that down, and we can break it down by score or by question, like we can look at question type, how do kids do on this kind of a question? How do we do? And I can, I'll talk about that a little later.
Okay, thank you.
This is our fourth grade. They're a little bit higher, significantly higher than where the state is performing. And the zero is really nice with the zero kids who are not, not meeting. And fifth grade, we tend to peak up at fourth and then come down in fifth, as that's a statewide trend, not just a Norfolk thing, that it tends to do that little bit of surge in fourth grade. It's a different exam each year that that happens. And so in fifth grade, 62%, again, a full 10% higher than the state. And in sixth grade, 75% to 54% in terms of that green band. Yeah. And so this is interesting. This is three years of data. This is our current sixth grade class of kids. And so the first paragraph that you see is when they took the test in third grade, and then the next one is when they took the test in fourth grade, and then again in fifth grade. They haven't taken the sixth grade test, so we don't have their current data for them. And so you can see how the, how they perform over time. And a little bit, you can see, there's nothing terribly unexpected here, because it's the same population of kids. There is a little bit of variation, because again, they're different tests. Each year, they're taking a slightly different test with more and different expectations.
Anita, I just want to jump into it. That also reflects the trend that we've seen statewide, that students tend to perform better on the fourth grade test.
Yes.
Than they do on the third and the fifth.
Is that the same, the student who's not, or students not meeting expectations, is that the, is that the same student year after year? Do you know off the top of your head?
Not off the top of my head, no.
No, not so certain. That's not, that's. It seems so low, like, why wouldn't you, why wouldn't they do an alt? Like, why wouldn't they do an alt?
The alt, the rules for doing the alt are very, very strict. They're actually working on, is that a reasonable expectation? I, sometimes you have a kid who has really significant needs, but because they can read even a little bit, they're having to access this assessment that isn't even a respectful experience for them, but we're required, the bar is really rigorously set by the state. And so we are giving feedback to the state about what we think that are appropriate experiences for our students, too, right? We want to measure them, and shouldn't they have an opportunity to have a portfolio to show their growth rather than this assessment? But they're, they're listening, but they haven't changed the rules yet.
Yeah. We haven't had any students take the MCAS alt, I would say, in three years, actually, which is kind of.
Across grade levels?
Across the whole school. So win-win for us and our teachers of, you know, what we're doing here, so, yeah. Is that spike that you see in the fourth grade, does that translate to the math component as well, or is it just ELA? I don't know if I'm jumping. You'll see, you'll see a difference, actually. You'll see a different difference, yeah.
But that, if you mirrored us, if we showed you both us and the state, you would see that as the state. So that reflects a little bit the assessment as well.
I got it, okay.
And the age level, like, there's a really big difference between a third grader and a fourth grader.
Oh, no, I know.
They're, they're more, there's a really big jump between third grade and fourth grade, so they're able to think more sophisticated. And also, they're much more fluent on the computer. So they're more able, because all of their composing on, they do have the opportunity to draft on paper, but they're, they're using the computer. And we start in HOD. We start with kindergarten, finding our letters, and then doing the typing pal to try to really, we have, we have classes journaling and doing all sorts of things, so we're doing our best to have them feel super comfortable in the beginning.
So they're fully computer literate, more or less, for a.
To the best of our ability.
Third grader when they enter. That's fantastic.
Yes, absolutely. Go next. Did we, or did I talk about this?
No.
No, I didn't talk about that, thank you. So this is our three-year data, and this is all students, grade three through six. And so this is how we did as a school in 2017, how we did as a, or as a district in 2018, and as a district in 2019. And this is just our scores from our school, and you can see that our scores are improving, and they're going up. I would, we want them to go up more, but they are on an upward trend, and so that just gives us a snapshot of where we're doing. So strengths and focus areas. Strengths, a big strength is we scored above the state on almost all of everything that we did in the test. So we're outperforming the average of Massachusetts. And just to kind of zoom out and have a little bit of perspective-taking, Massachusetts is number one in the nation. And so we're performing above the state, and the state is performing above all the other states. Though there's a new report that says New Jersey squeaked out ahead of us, but the only variable that made New Jersey go ahead of us was they spend more money on the schools than we do in Massachusetts. So that allowed them to squeak ahead, but we're still number one, like, just really.
Her pupil spending is an important.
Her pupil spending is, and put New Jersey on top this year.
That's saying something.
So we're number two, right? But so that we are scoring above the average of the state, when the state is performing above the average is quite a thing to say. Some strengths for us are selected responses, and that's that multiple choice or drag-and-drop. Another strength for us is the constructed responses, where they're putting their ideas down into a paragraph form. The domains that are strengths for us, vocabulary is strong in every single grade, so we have a really nice, strong vocabulary building. Craft and structure is strong for us, and that might be, they might be asked to say, what does this sentence mean? The teacher buzzed into the room. Does this mean this, 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 or this? Or it might mean have some figurative language, or what is the, how is the author using light to give the mood in this story? And so it might be something around the craft of writing. The integration of knowledge is how more shown in that essay piece, where they're learning, they're taking knowledge from one source and knowledge from another source, and applying it to new learning, which is, which is a really novel thing. Like, we didn't do that even four years ago. We weren't doing that, taking, in a testing environment, our students are having new learning and new thinking, all on their own, and showing what they're thinking about these things. And so that is a strength. I think it was a little weaker in one grade, but all the other grades it was strung across. And then key ideas and details are recognizing details, and key ideas also includes theme, so understanding the theme of a passage, and what are the details in the story. Focus areas for us are, while we did still score above the state in most areas, our performance wasn't as strong as we hoped. And the essay is still a challenge for us, as it is across the straight state. The kids have to read these two, there's a lot of stamina. They have, excuse me, they have to read two pieces, and then construct a long response. And so that still is an area for growth for us. And inside a essay is conventions. So how do, the kids are using conventions on the computer, so they're typing in the punctuation and doing that piece on the computer, and then writing for different text types and purposes. So those are areas that are continuing to be areas of focus for us. And then I'll turn it over to Vicky.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. Hello. So I just want to go over the math data, and I'll try not to repeat, I know you've got a lot of information, and it does cross over a lot, but you had a great question about math, like the results, and I think that you'll see it's a little bit different, because the test is, is very different from even how it was presented to students versus ELA. So the first thing I kind of just wanted to share with you is the types of mathematical questions. Math, computer assessment, it is a lot more tool-heavy than in ELA. Students are asked to, not only multiple choice and multiple select questions and fill-in-the-blank, but there's also like technology in hand, so our students are asked to drag answers to correct boxes, to maybe order something from greatest to least. There's hotspot questions, where they're asked to interpret a graph, and maybe plot graph points, depending on the grade level, so they have to be able to click on the right point. And we also have open response, where the students are asked to kind of answer more critical thinking questions. And as you can see, an example, they, they work with protractors, and this is a great example of a drag-and-drop, where they have to drag the, at the very top, there's a few boxes, to the right, the protractor that shows how many degrees it is. And in the other far left corner, you can see there's a two-part question, and there's an equation builder, where students are asked to actually be able to demonstrate what the equation is, to be able to build using the keys. But one of the nice things that we have, which Anita kind of touched upon, is our integration specialist. And they do really work with our students on their computer skills, and they do get a lot of exposure, like you said, starting in kindergarten with these. And teachers also try to incorporate this type of questioning through maybe in-class like an exit slip, they might be asked to do in a computer. Our math program, GoMath, also has a lot, a nice online component, so by the time they reach kind of like this type of assessment, they've already been exposed to these type of questions. So just going through our scores a little bit, this is our last year's score. This is grade three. As you can see, we've also scored above the state, and we did combine the exceeding and the meeting results. This is grade four. We're about 65% in exceeding and meeting versus the state that scored at 49%. And I do have to say that, in, as far as math goes, in grade four, the concepts really ramp up. There's a lot of review. The students have opportunities, they're dealing more with whole numbers, operations, starting in kindergarten, but in fourth grade, they really start delving into concepts like fractions, you know, and then they get into decimals, which are something they haven't been exposed to, that these are new concepts that are being assessed on. In grade five, we've actually are quite significantly above the state, where we're at 72%, as the state is at 49%. And grade six has had our largest growth, where we're at 81%, as the state is at 51%. And I guess it's such a celebration of all the teaching learned that happens, really starting from kindergarten, because foundational skills are so key, so that by the time students are getting into sixth grade with those really more pre-algebraic type of questions, they are ready and can kind of do that type of mathematics. This is a three-year data, so this is our current sixth graders. As you can see, when they took it in third grade versus fourth grade, where they seem to peak, and versus fifth grade, we don't have this year's data, obviously, because they'll be taking it in the spring, but I'd be curious to see if we follow the same trend that we just saw last year, where sixth graders hit an 80th percentile, so. But as you can see, like, we're, we're significantly above, above the state in our performance in mathematics. This is our three-year data for all students, and same thing, as you can see, we're quite, a lot of green.
Vicky, I think that graph is, I think that graph is reversed. We'll have to double-check that. I think the years don't match the columns.
Oh, is that what happened? Okay.
Yeah, because the trend that we saw with math is, is that it's increasing as well.
So 69, 73, 74.
I think we switched the years, because they were backwards, but we didn't switch the bar graphs.
Okay.
I'll, I'll bring the updated next time.
Your horizontal axis is off.
The middle one's right.
The middle one.
One out of three.
So this is kind of looking at our overall strengths, and like, each grade level does, it varies just a little bit, but we just kind of looked at trends. So in math, like, like we did in ELA, we obviously can see we scored above the state in the majority of standards. Our specific areas include fluency with whole number operations, which is our multiplication division of our facts practice, and I know we have a big focus here on using reflex math, and we have a great support from our parents, too, with a most great partnership, which kind of the results speak for themselves, about getting our kiddos ready and be able to be fluently practice those operations. Geometry measurement and data is another area of strength for us, and analyzing patterns and relationships, so that's kind of like an example, being fourth grade, if they do like prime and composite numbers, they're kind of looking at those patterns. So those type of questions, which, which is a higher-order thinking skill, so it's really great to see. Focus area are fractions, which is not a surprise, that is very common across the board. I think that that is a very complex kind of, you know, skill for students to master. You've really have been dealing with four, with whole numbers for five years, and they're getting into much more difficult concepts, and to be able to visualize what is happening with our numbers when they're asked to multiply and divide with fractions, like, it takes[1688.58] Focus area are fractions, which is not a surprise. That is very common across the board. I think that that is a very complex kind of, you know, skill for students to master. You've really have been dealing with four, with whole numbers for five years and they're getting into much more difficult concepts. And to be able to visualize what is happening with our numbers when they're asked to multiply and divide with fractions, like it takes a lot of practice. Constructive response is our open-ended questions. So basically, those are like those when they're asking to, they're given a problem and they have to, maybe like a multi-step problem. And they're asked to construct an answer given on the information that they're given and plus knowledge that they might have. So they're asked to kind of put all the knowledge together to answer the question. So those are definitely those higher level thinking mathematical questions. Once again, this is usually an area of, that is a focus for most districts. We, we did a professional development. We offered for our teachers last year district-wide, kind of looking at problem solving to see how like we can incorporate or continue to incorporate more higher level thinking skills. And then the number and operation concepts is basically your pre-algebraic kind of questions, you know. And again, it's kind of a big shift when you go from lower elementary to upper elementary, like those concepts kind of get introduced. So students usually need multiple years to kind of master them. And we did want to kind of highlight, like, and celebrate our data for mathematics with students with disabilities, which I know we kind of brought up the question. And as you can see, over the last three years, our number that's in the green for students who have reached exceeding and meeting expectations has almost doubled. So we have forty-two percent of our students are in the exceeding and meeting expectations range, which is fantastic. And it's really kind of speaks to great work that our teachers are kind of doing with differentiating instruction and supporting students that need, you know, specialized curriculum and instruction. So it's really something that we just want to kind of share and celebrate together.
It's also been a focus of our district improvement goals around closing that gap in mathematics. So it's really nice to see the data show.
That's amazing in just a couple of years. That's.
Right.
And these are identified students.
Yes. So you can, when you're looking at data, you can just really maybe just.
Me that gets excited about this, but you can look at it in so many different ways and you can pull like my specific subgroups.
So we, we do take the time to look at our general population, but then really kind of look into our subgroups as well. And the purpose of that is, as with this whole data, it gives us an opportunity to kind of see like what areas we need to focus on. How can we support our students, our teachers, you know? So this is great information to have. And sometimes like it's also great to see for us that some things we're implementing have really been effective. So I'll be thinking to you. And this is our students with disabilities as compared to the state. And you can see that the state is at fifteen percent and we're at forty-two percent. So, and their not meeting expectations is at thirty-eight percent versus our twelve percent. So we're definitely moving in the right direction. So Anita and I are just gonna speak to a few areas for across overall, kind of overarching for all content areas for what like are some of the identified next steps. And we kind of came up with this in collaboration with our administrators and teachers and our math and literacy specialists. And the first one, which we've been really excited about is our, we've been able to implement, take our math and literacy specialists, their roles. And we've added a coaching component, which has been a really great shift for us. Because our teachers are asked to be responsible for so much content and so much information and so much new learning. And we have an inclusive practice, so they have students in their classrooms with a range variety of needs. So to be able to offer somebody who has expertise in a particular content area, so they can come in and plan with teachers and collaborate and kind of support that instruction and learning and pedagogy has been really a great shift for us. And it's been a great way for us to support our teachers. So if we offer professional development, like it's kind of a big overview, but then our specialists are able to kind of meet with individual teachers and kind of say, how are we going to implement this now into your classroom? That makes sense and is responsive to the students in front of you.
Yep. And just to kind of piggyback on that, it's a, it's a research-based strategy that other districts are using that are, has really a lot of evidence around peers as coaches lifting practice. So we're very excited about that. Another next step for us as a district is to continue to provide professional development around instructional strategies and teaching critical thinking skills. This will be in, not just in the areas of math and ELA, but also in our, we have a new social studies framework. And the science is new, new, but the science, there's a big trend towards student-led inquiry. And so we're going to be doing quite a bit of PD around where, where, first, we were working on asking really good, rich questions for our students to grapple with. And really the trend is the, the kids should be asking the questions. And how do we support our students asking the questions, but then not lose, not have it be runaway trained, right? Where they're still accountable for their learning and how do we do that? And so we'll be doing that. A lot of the research from Marzano and others, it talks a lot about the importance of collective teacher efficacy, having impact on student learning. So really working with our teacher teams. The more the teachers work together, when they're collaborating, it really lifts student performance. So if I go in my classroom and I, I'm a great teacher, but my door is shut and it's just me, myself and I being an awesome teacher. We're not going to get to that level until I'm collaborating with my colleagues and really lifting up. So we'll do work to continue to do that. We're working on strengthening our understanding of the frameworks. What is, what is our charge with each of these dozens and dozens and dozens and dozens and dozens of things that kids have to learn in each grade level? And they'll be, I already talked about student-led inquiry. And Vicki.
Yep. And then, so, and we're going to continue with data efforts and analyzing student data. Like I said, MCAS is just one point of data. We have a lot of, we have benchmark assessments that we use. We have unit assessments and kind of informal classroom data that we use to kind of see if, how our students are doing. You know, what concepts they're mastering versus what concepts we need to reteach. And like Lisa does a great job, we really kind of break down the results and we share them with teachers. And with both schools, we really utilize those, such a valued time for data meetings, where teachers have that two hours every month to meet and really take a deep dive into like our data, our, look at the student work and kind of analyze and plan for next steps.
There we go. So then specific to ELA, we're going to continue to build on our implementation of the workshop model. Do you want me to talk more about that or I should just move on? That's okay? Okay? Continue to building and enhancing the ELA curriculum and consistency of practice between classrooms and grades. Strengthening our ability to teach writing across the curriculum areas, so they're not just writing in ELA, but they're writing in science and they're writing in math. And they're just like they do, I know they do at the middle school and high school. And strengthening our teacher's skills and conferring with readers. So really giving careful, specific feedback to grow our students as readers and as writers. And continue to work on embedding. One of the things that we've discovered is what was happening is we're teaching reading and writing workshop really well and better and better and better. And then we're teaching phonics over here in the lower grades and grammar over here in the lower grades. And we need to, with more intention, connect those into our writing instruction. And so how does that look? Where we're still doing that sequential introduction to skills, but we're applying it into the writer's workshop. So we're, we're leaning into that work in both schools. And then standardizing our practices in, there's been a lot of attention to, I'm going to say, or a raised awareness and attention to phonetic awareness. And they know that we're going to be asked to test kids for dyslexia in the early grades. And so really, we want to be experts on that before we lean into that work. And so understanding the importance of phonetic awareness and how are we teaching it? And then having more consistency in how that's taught. So those are specific to ELA.
And then like next steps for math is to continue to focus on our fluency in grade eight or six. We also do, as you can see, there's a lot of parallels between literacy and mathematics. We're gonna, we also do the math workshop model. We will continue building and enhancing our curriculum, especially like we've had opportunities to, as a curriculum director, like have a great opportunity to be, to visit both schools and kind of see the great teaching learned that is happening and then meet with teachers. We have a dedicated meeting time where we have curriculum meetings. We can really focus in on kind of specific curriculum points that maybe you want to hand. So we might look at a chapter together, you know, and kind of make plans, see what we need to kind of supplement to, to kind of lift student learning. And Anita does the same thing on the literacy end. And kind of develop pedagogical strategies to kind of continue to expose our students to those critical thinking problems. And it's really like you hear that buzzword, like preparing them for the 21st century skills, you know, but really that is our ultimate goal. Like we want them to be self-advocates. We want them to be able to know how to problem solve, even if they don't know the answer, right? And how would they get there? So those are all like vital skills for them to be able to be successful in middle school and going forward, that we really want to kind of teach them.
Ask a quick question, ask any meeting before you go and whoever can answer this. And I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit, but I think this is something that I'm kind of teeing up for you. Can you comment on the importance of maintaining classroom sizes at the current level, if not slightly lower, as it relates to what you've just presented and going forward, if you don't mind? And that's all, there's anyone who could do it.
Yeah, and I think you can really tie that into the workshop model as well.
Absolutely.
May I take this? Awesome. It's, it's hugely important.
We didn't plan this out.
Yeah, no, no, we haven't seen each other ever before. So it's very, very important. If you think about the responsibility that we have, like if you look at any classroom teacher, the responsibility that they have in a hundred and eighty days to do their job. So they have a hundred and eighty days to teach, to mastery, all of these things in all of the content areas. And if you, I remember I was teaching first grade at the time and I had twenty-seven students. And at the end of the day, I would go through my class list just to make sure I'd even spoken to. Imagine if you had to go speak to twenty-seven people and you have six hours to do it. And that doesn't even know if they can master addition or subtraction, or if they can read the clock, or if they know how to decode their words. And so six, twenty-seven people, you can't even say good morning. So the fewer people you have, the better handle you can have on what they're learning. And our teachers are getting really proficient at getting very specific. So I know you as a reader, I know you as a writer, and I'm growing you from this, your zone of proximal development, which is just where you're a little bit, not you're like out in the field, but where you're just ready to start to learn. And I can know that so well, as long as I don't have fifty-seven other kids. And so the smaller my classes, the better expert I can be to help my learners. And I'm sure that the same is in math workshop where we really know our students so much. I'm old enough that, that it's so much different than the way we understood them as learners so long ago. And now we know really explicitly, this is where you're at as a writer and this is your next thing. And this is your, and we know this, how it works and how kids learn. And, and we know how it works in spelling and we know how it works. And so we're able to really be experts on our students. So the more students you have, the less expert you can be. Just like you wouldn't want your primary care physician to have five hundred people, right? You'd want, the fewer is better because then they can really not give you their attention, so.
I'm, I'm not trying to simplify that at all, only to add to it. But I think as we, as a community and a society, we learn, we've learned over the years how each child is a different type of learner.
Absolutely.
This type of model only helps that.
Absolutely. It's, it's, it's also more fun to teach. It's also harder to teach because you have to really know kids at a really deep level. And so our teachers have done so much work to become more and more expert at this and how do we respond to learners? How do you respond to the reader who does this? Or what if they're not doing this? Or what if they don't understand this? And so really growing our toolkit so we can help and support all our learners. So I hope that.
Yes, no, thank you very much.
In addition to that, we very rarely teach whole class lessons anymore. It might be a ten-minute intro to a topic, but most of the instruction happens in small groups. And that's what the workshop model is all about. So if you have four small groups, you can divide your time and spend a reasonable amount of teaching time with each group of students. When you get twenty-seven, twenty-eight, you're talking five or six groups. It, it just, there's just a lot less direct instruction that can happen and a lot less differentiation that can happen in terms of hearing your instruction to fit the students' needs.
Well, and to piggyback on that, my assumption, I think this was embedded in your answer, but to bring it out as a separate topic. The amazing strides you guys have seen in moving kids who have identified needs or learning disabilities into a closer range of, of meeting expectations. My assumption would be that would move in the opposite direction if you were talking about a situation where you had six or seven extra children in the classroom and you're trying to provide that differentiated instruction.
Because it's hard to meet everybody's needs and so, and they are all unique. In all my, I've never had two kids that are exactly the same. They're all unique and special, but none the same.
And like our technology director, last year at our opening day, she kind of said something that's always stuck with me. She said, we're preparing our children for jobs that don't exist yet, right? And that is an awesome responsibility. It's exciting, but it also is a little bit, you know, can be a little bit intimidating, you know? And we really want to embed, it's beyond just like the textbook learning, like Ingrid was saying, you know? We really want to embed those skills. And that can really happen when you're able to meet with students individually and say like, let me hear about your mathematical thinking. Like, how did you get to this problem? You know what I mean? And how can I help you exceed your own expectations, you know? And I think that, like, that, that becomes lost and muddied when like the class sizes become, you know, a certain number.
You can also add into the social emotional learning aspects of it. When you have a smaller group, your community of learners is closer, more cohesive. You can really work on those social emotional skills that kids are really going to need for the future. We're finding that more and more that with all the neuroscience that's out there now about learning, the importance of children feeling safe and cared for and connected. And that can only be enhanced by a smaller group of kids in, in your classroom.
Thank you, love.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not the science data.
This is quick. There's only one grade level tested here.
It's really just one slide. The only thing that I kind of want to point out that science is assessed only in grades five and grades eight. And we are really, the kiddos are asked questions around science that they learn in grades K through five. So, and we still do significantly well above the state. It has also been this first year where they've taken science exclusively on the computer also. So, so all our MCAS is computer-based, unless you have, like I said, Lisa mentioned earlier, an IEP. That gives you paper, paper and pencil.
Can I, I, this is just curiosity more than anything else. Like, they're tested on any scientific topic they may have learned at some point between, so all those moon logs we've been doing over the past, but that's going to pay off now?
It is cumulative. It's, it's anything that they covered from grade five. And eighth grade would be the same, anything from fifth grade to eighth grade.
But the nice thing about it is the science standards have shifted in two thousand and sixteen. So they used to be like ranges, so you can teach this topic between kindergarten and second grade. And it's up to you or the district when you want to do it. And now they're very specific. So we really can, it'll easier for teachers to take ownership over specific standards.
That was kind of my question, is just how do you, because they, they prepare for the other aspects of the MCAS during the year, I know. And it's just kind of, how do you just sort of like cross your fingers?
So that has helped, that shift has helped. And the teachers do a lot of review and there's a lot of vertical work that happens. So teachers from different grade levels meet. We have a science committee that I run too, that we kind of look at that vertical alignment to make sure that every grade level is really focusing on their standards. And we provide teachers with like the materials. And the nice thing about science, we really try to bring in other content added. It really lends itself to like literacy. So a lot of times, things that students will learn in science, they might read about in a text in, we're bringing like in literacy. You know, we try to really align mathematics too. So it's not like they have like a science classroom. We do try to embed it. And science really is kind of like the real world example of mathematics and literacy, right? So it's, it lends itself to kind of creative teaching, so.
I'm going to wrap it up really quick. I'm just going to talk a little bit about the MCAS accountability results and how the state basically configures those. So this is the second year with the new accountability with the state. The accountability targets for all school districts in Massachusetts. So the targets I'm going to talk about right now is just basically globally, all of Massachusetts. So thirty-one percent categorized as meeting targets. Fifty-three percent in the state of Massachusetts categorized as partially meeting targets. Fourteen percent categorized in the need of focused target support. And two percent categorized in, in the broad comprehensive support. So therefore, indicators to determine progress towards improved targets. And overall, we received eighty-one percent, so we're pretty happy about that. And the areas that they look at for our improved targets are our achievement in ELA, math and science. And that also talks about a lot of the subcategories that Vicki and Anita talked about today. So some of those gains that you saw basically with our students with disabilities, how we made these gains, our high needs populations. Those things, when we're increasing, this is increasing our targets basically as well. Our growth in ELA and math, and then there's additional indicators as well. Overall, as a school district, the North Public Schools received an eighty-three percent in progress towards meeting targets or exceeding targets. So we're very proud. I think, you know, kudos to basically all of our teachers at HOD and Freeman Kennedy School. You know, they're the ones that are in with the students every single day, working to actually achieve the goals. You know, HOD provides us that strong foundation for the kids and then we receive them from there. We have amazing curriculum directors that are working really hard in the trenches, I think, with basically our developmental reading in math teachers. And also the implementation of the coaches this year, just from, you know, administrative level of looking at the perspective of, you know, brand-new teachers coming into the district. This year, I have seen, and the kudos to all of our coaches out there, you know, working with them from the day that they work in here. The confidence that those teachers have right now, basically of what I've seen in four or five months is absolutely amazing. So kudos to that as well and great job, everybody. Any questions for me? I know you guys asked a lot of questions, but everybody else.
I just want to say.
There's value to going last sometimes, Lisa.
I just want to say thank you to all the principals here. It's your enthusiasm and knowledge and love of learning shines through. And I'm in the educational field for twenty-something years and I know that's not always the case. You know, you get burnt out a little bit. But your enthusiasm and knowledge just shines through and I want to say thank you very, very much.
Takes a village, that would say, takes a village.
Thank you very much for coming and presenting and sharing the data. And we, as always, are thrilled to be able to celebrate the growth that we've seen, we've seen in students and continue to work on those focus areas as Vicki and Anita described, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
With the permission of the committee, I'm going to suggest that we, um, move the King Philip's start time discussion forward. Mr. Zinni is here to present tonight, and while we'd love to keep him here all night, Todd is.
Oh, I'm sorry, Todd.
Todd is, um, stuck with us for the budget subcommittee after, so, um, if it's okay, then we move forward. He has the pleasure of enjoying a budget subcommittee meeting after.
That's what I meant to say, Madora.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me here tonight. I want to thank Dr. Lani and all of you for moving me up on the agenda a little bit. But also, I'm glad it wasn't up too fast, because I wouldn't have had the chance to hear the MCAS presentation at this point. And it really was great to be able to hear that. One of the things I think we've continued to talk about over the last couple of years, I'm just going to steal away before we go into the lead start, is, you know, this, the education that our students receive here in, in the three communities, Norfolk, Rhentham and Plainville. And, um, we can't do the work that we do at King Philip without the strong foundation that is built here. And clearly, when you see the scores of the MCAS, you know that the students are walking into KP Middle School with a very strong, solid foundation that we're then able to build the rest of the house off of. And I do want to tell you that although you heard the MCAS presentation here, you didn't hear the one that we did in KP, although Jeff, Jeff got to hear it. And it was riveting, I'm sure, yeah, just right there. But we were able to boast the same kinds of stats that you were hearing tonight. That same kind of high-performing students who are scoring way above the state average. And I think that's, you know, really a tribute to the education that the students receive from the beginning here, all the way through the continuum. And so I thank you for your support and for helping those students to be so successful before they get to us. I just wanted to add one thing as well, because we, I heard, I think it might have been Anita that was talking about how Massachusetts is outperforming the country and how we are outperforming the state. And I think that's a really important stat to put out there. But what also is important to note is that some of the international tests that are out there now, the P's or the Tims that have been given in the last few years, and we keep hearing about how our country is slipping. What we don't hear is that Massachusetts has paid to have its scores disaggregated, to see what would Massachusetts look like if it was its own country? And when they do that, Massachusetts is scoring in the top five in the world. In science and mathematics and literacy.
Is that on DESI?
Yes, some of that, that information is on DESI, yes. Um, and those reports come out every two years, and we get the, the latest updates, and we celebrate that. So if you think about it, if we, this community, are outperforming the state, and the state is outperforming the world, your students are truly getting a world-class education like no other. Um, and it's something I, I think that we don't celebrate enough. So I'm glad I was here to be able to celebrate that with you this evening. Um, and with that, I'll, I'll move into the, the purpose for me to be here tonight. Last spring, I, I joined you here with a few representatives of the community who were talking about late, the late start initiative that they were going to move forward at the middle and high school level. They shared with you a lot of provocative data regarding the, the benefits of older students starting school later each day, that the sleep time that they, they acquire is really beneficial to them, they do better in school, that there are a lot of, of great benefits to that. And I won't repeat all of that, because you heard that presentation back in the spring. That then prompted the King Philip School Committee to move forward with an exploratory committee to look at the possibility of changing our start time. As we began to move forward with that, it became clear that there were some very important questions that really needed to be answered before we could move forward and do work. Depending on how those questions were answered, told us which direction, if any, direction we could go in. Remembering that this district or our districts are very unique in their structure. And so when you hear about other school districts that have changed their start times, often, they are controlled by one administration and one contract for buses, et cetera. And so they make the decision to adjust the start times in all of their schools, they work that out, and it's all done. Because of the configuration we have, we don't have that ability to do that. Um, and so there were two ways that we can look at this project. The first one was to look at simply the middle and high school changing their start times on their own, and moving forward with that. And that seems like that would be a easy thing to do. Unfortunately, it's not, because our contracts for King Philip are tied directly with the contracts for the elementary schools of Plainville and Norfolk regarding busing. And we, so we share buses, we're on a two-tier system. They come first in the morning and pick up the students at King Philip. There is a half-hour break between the morning run at King Philip, and then they, when they start the run, um, to pick up the students from Norfolk and Plainville. But in the afternoon, they drop off the students from King Philip, and there is no break time between the time they have, after that run is done, and getting to the, the elementary schools. And so if we were to adjust, or to change our times and simply go it alone, if you will, adjusting those times, what it would mean is, King Philip would have to purchase its own, or rent for three-year contract, its own fleet of buses. So where we now have twenty-four buses, I believe, servicing King Philip, and, you know, some of those service Norfolk, some of them service Plainville, we would then need those twenty-four buses. And elementary districts would also need twenty-four buses. So early in the discussions, I sat down with our bus company, because we are in year two of a three-year bus contract. It's, we, we, uh, parallel those, and asked them what it would mean for us to do that. At that time, they told us that it would mean a doubling cost, plain and simple. King Philip spends about a million dollars in transportation for its students, and between Norfolk and Plainville, they're spending another million dollars. Now, even though Norfolk, uh, Rhentham is not in the mix as far as sharing buses, Rhentham's town also supports King Philip's budget, which means that if there was an increase to King Philip's costs, Rhentham would feel it as well. So a decision like this impacts all the communities. So if we, in fact, were doubling the cost, you're talking about adding two, two million dollars to the budget. Now, again.
I just want to clarify, it, it would be a million-dollar increase to the KP budget, but our bus contract would also double in cost, and that's about six hundred thousand annually.
Right, and Plainville's would also double.
Right.
So you're looking at a, a doubling of the transportation between those three communities, equalling about two million dollars. So this, the, the committee then suggested that what we should do is send out for, um, a request for information to the bus companies throughout the state to see if there was, if this was maybe an inflated quote. And remember, with this, when we asked for that, we were in year one of a three-year contract. There, there, they were not in, there was no incentive for them to really dig deep and look at this contract.
Paul, one other question?
Sure.
The doubling of cost is due to the doubling of the bus company's fleet?
Exactly.
Drivers?
You're going from twenty-four buses to forty-eight buses, you're going, doubling the number of drivers. You also then have to park those buses someplace, house them, maintain them.
Yeah, it's the most.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so you're looking at, really, it logically makes sense doubling the cost here. So we did do a, a request for information. Larry Azar, our business manager, sent out a proposal or a request for thought to sixty bus companies throughout the state, and only one replied. The company was not close by, but they basically said, "We, we really couldn't give you an accurate figure without much more information, but here's what our going bus rate was, which was about seventy percent higher than what our rate was." And then they said, "On top of that, we would have to find someplace to house the buses," and then reminded us that there is a significant bus driver shortage. Okay, so that was the reality. This was presented to the.
Can I just jump in?
Absolutely.
The request for information we sent out after the first regional, um, uh, early start time meeting this fall. So we were in the second year of the bus contract with one year remaining, so that.
I'm sorry, yes, right. So this information was brought to the King Philip School Committee, um, and they felt that, that type of strain on the budget for both King Philip and knowing the ripple effects it would have on Norfolk's budget, Plainville's budget, and to a lesser degree, Rhentham, because they support the King Philip's budget. The, the committee, and Jeff, you were at these meetings, so please jump in at any point if I'm not presenting this exactly right. The feeling was that they did not think that we could move forward in that direction at this time. Now, we're in year two. There is an understanding that in year three, when we do send out our bus, uh, request for bids, we can put in multiple options for our proposal and ask them to bid on it, you know, from different facets, and see what that looks like at that point. And so if we have not done anything prior to that, um, we still can, when we put the bid out, look at a variety of scenarios and ask them to bid and give us costs on those scenarios, and to see if it does come in less than what they're projecting, when they actually have to sit down and sharpen their pencils and, and do the math. But for right now, based on those project, projections, it didn't feel that that was a direction that we could, we could move forward with. That left us with only one other option, if we were to then investigate moving forward, and that's why I'm here this evening. And that was to look to the elementary districts to see if there was interest, um, a commitment to perhaps look at the start times and the length of days at the elementary level, so that there could be some type of shifting. In other words, if we were still continuing with the two-tier bus system, then you might consider taking the elementary students to school first, then doing the second run and bringing in the middle and high school students later. That would affect, you know, the near end of daytime. That's how some other districts that are pre-K to twelve have managed it. They've adjusted their start and end times at all levels. Again, King Philip does not have that authority or ability to adjust. Um, we actually even looked at adjusting middle and high school separately. But in fact, we share many of our buses, they do a run and they do a drop-off at the middle school, and then they take the rest of the kids to the high school or vice versa. So we wouldn't get that impact by doing it simply with King Philip, King Philip alone. So we recognize that this would be a commitment or an issue that would ripple to all three elementaries. And we need, so basically what I'm here tonight to do is to explain to you that that would be the only option that King Philip could look at to move forward with this. And the committee felt it was important to gauge the elementary committee's interest, appetite, willingness to, um, to look at this from that level. Um, and I'm not necessarily here to get an answer tonight, but to share with you what the, the issue is, and then for you to, to kind of, I guess, chew on that a little bit and, and let us know what the thinking is on that.
Paul, uh, when we talked before, I think you gave me an estimated start time that would need to happen for you to move it back. What time would we need to begin the school day?
Well, the buses are, are rolling out, I mean, there are, there are a number of options that we'd have to look at. But the buses right now, ours, our kids start at seven twenty-five. And, um, then there's a, they have a half-hour, and then they need that block of time to do the run for the elementaries. You do stop later than Plainville. You're probably looking at an hour differential, either way, because we, we take about an hour to pick up our students in the morning, starting with the earliest stops. And so if we were to say start at eight, let's say we had our kids coming to school for eight-thirty, the buses would have to stop picking them up at seven-thirty, which would mean that they would have to have all of your students dropped off by seven-thirty. So if you were looking to, if, you know, if, if we were looking to go later, start time of nine o'clock for the middle and the high school, then you could conceivably drop off here at eight o'clock. Remembering that if they drop off at nine o'clock, our day then runs quite late. And so there are ripple effects that King Philip would have to look at, like sports, after-school activities, students who work, have part-time jobs, all of those issues. We know that there's a ripple effect. A half-hour change means, we can, we can kind of work that out somewhat with sports and scheduling. If our students get out of school at four o'clock in the afternoon, rather than two-thirty or two-fifteen, then it's going to be a much more difficult process for them to work out some of those extra activities, and for those students to work part-time jobs and things. So where that nine o'clock start would work for you perhaps, it would be hard for us to, because maybe start our kids later than eight to eight-thirty.
Right. And when the committee did their research on all the districts that made that shift, from my recollection, there aren't any elementary districts starting their day before eight.
That's my understanding as well. They, they were able to play with the middle school structure as well, and they, oftentimes, the districts are more contained. We're actually, King Philip is reaching out to three communities, and so the buses go quite far in different directions.
Quite a bit longer than within your own town.
Exactly, yeah, it's, it's a quite complex process. And that's why we realized that we really couldn't have a serious conversation about next steps at the middle and high school level, unless there was a commitment to have some serious conversation at the elementary level. And, you know, that's, so like I said, I'm here to kind of answer questions, to put it on the table, and to go from there.
So the scenario that has the least amount of friction is what?
Seven-thirty start time for the elementary district.
Yeah, is what again, so that?
The, the only feasible would be, yeah, the seven-thirty start time.
Would we end the day at HOD and Freeman one? For a standard?
Two-thirteen?
Yeah.
Two-ten, because that's by schedule.
It'd be Franklin.
There are a number of ripples to that. Now, you talked earlier about childcare, after, before and after-school childcare. Now, you're going to have far fewer people using before-school care by, at that point, but you're going to have far more people needing after-school care.
And the issue is, we have no space for after-school care right now. That's the, that there's no SAC is at capacity, because we have no rooms for SAC to operate in, so.
I think the bigger, the biggest concern that I would have again is that I haven't seen any elementary schools across the Commonwealth starting before eight o'clock. I think it's very, very difficult for families of young children who have to get the kids up, have to support them in getting dressed, getting ready, getting out the door. If they're dropped off at seven-thirty, that means some of our kids are going to be picked up at six forty-five, when it's dark at bus stations. I, I think that would be really, I, I think the committee can certainly choose to put up, for discussion, on a future, um, agenda item, but I would have reservations around that.
This also challenges with cutting high school kids up in the morning, too.
We have, I have high school kids in my neighborhood, and, and they're out at the bus at six forty in the morning, and it's dark.
Yes.
And I, and, and I just, my heart would, I, I don't know.
Then that's why the, yeah, that's why this initiative has moved forward, because we're recognizing a number of things. First of all, the circadian rhythms of adolescence change dramatically, and kids literally are not wired to fall asleep at eight or nine o'clock at night. So telling them to go to bed earlier doesn't get them the sleep time. They're not falling asleep till eleven o'clock at night. And so giving them a good, solid sleep means they're not getting up at six, you know, five-thirty in the morning, so they can be at the bus stop at six-thirty in the morning. Um, we recognize that. You also got young drivers who are on the road, driving to school at six-thirty AM, when they're sleep deprived. There are a lot of factors. Know that we're looking at this in a number of ways as well, when we're looking at the sleep patterns. We're looking at things like reducing the amount of homework that, that our students are being asked to do, so that they're not up till eleven o'clock at night, trying to, to prep for those.
My proposal would be really popular.
Our student rep is just, she's very excited about that idea of the less, the homework. She gave that a thumbs up.
Does the data diverge at all from middle school to high school in terms of like the sleep required?
The high school is the biggie, the big win. And that's where you've seen some of the districts that have had, um, their ability to really jimmy rig all of the, the school times have actually gone with middle school first, then elementary, then high school. But remember, our middle school and high school are attached because of the transportation piece. So that, that option doesn't, doesn't work. The other issue that, that should be noted is that an elementary school day is traditionally shorter than a high school. That's why you have the window of a half-hour in the morning, but you don't have the window in the afternoon. Because when I first saw that window in the morning, I got very excited, because I thought, even if we could peel a half-hour out of this, that gives us a little bit of ta, uh, lag time. Um, we don't have that in the afternoon. It's just, that's the makeup of a, of an elementary day, it's a shorter day. So another option would be the length of the day. There are other ripples that go along with that. That means that you now have staff that are working a longer day. That means, contractually, when you're paying them, there's a ripple effect that goes along with all of that. So we, like I said, we recognize where all the hurdles are. Other districts have shown that when they have a, you know, a pre-K twelve district, that they're not insurmountable. They've found ways to do it. We have more complications because of our configuration. And as I said, King Philip can't work out those pieces of it without the collaboration of the elementaries. But we realize that there's not as big a win at the elementary level.
Now, I was understanding, I think Franklin went pretty far down the road with this. I know they're a K to twelve district, and they ultimately did not implement any sort of change.
Still up for discussion, I believe.
Still, well.
Franklin School employee right here.
Okay, but it's at least semi-tabled, I guess, at the moment. It's fair that there was a lot of momentum, and then it's sort of seemingly gone away.
I, I would say, Tom, one of the, when we look at the successful districts, the districts that have done this and they've stayed in that new direction, there's been a lot of pre-work done, work with families, trying to help them, you know, answer their questions, looking at things like the childcare factors. Because not just your after-school care that you offer here, but many of your families rely on older siblings coming home and watching the younger siblings. If the older siblings aren't getting home until after the younger ones, that falls apart. So, you know, kind of looking at all of those factors, talking with the students about it. And a couple of districts where it's, it's kind of gotten sabotaged in the end of the process has been because the. process has been because the students were not completely on board for it. So... Which was an interesting dynamic that we hadn't thought about. So, when you're moving this forward, there would have to be lots of conversations with the students about why this is better, and answering their questions and getting momentum there. There would have to be public forums at all levels to talk with families about what the pros and cons of this, hear their concerns, and try to make sure that we had those kinds of issues resolved for them. So, if, in fact, we have the support of the elementaries, it's going to be a long process. We're not talking about doing this for September. We're talking at least a year to even two years out.
That's what they ask you, what's your timeline is to... Because it's going to take a long time.
It's a long time, if you're going to do it right, to make sure that you have all of those things. Yeah, that would be the way I would hope.
I think that's a good way to go.
I try to usually shoot for that direction.
Yeah.
Like this point.
Is there any... I know there's been a tremendous amount of study, and I am supportive of the concept that extra sleep for adolescents is an important thing. I don't dispute that at all. Is there any proof, or has there been any discussion, of whether or not moving an earlier start time for the younger kids running up through sixth grade would not have a detriment?
That's a very, very valid question.
We're assuming it's this easy flip switch that...
The benefit is that as your students get older, they will be in a flow where the schools that they will be going to would be at an early... At the later time. But the research does not show that there's a benefit for younger children coming earlier. I will say, as a parent, and although my kids are now 26 and 28, so we're past those. So, I've had all of those different, you know, stages along the way. When my kids were in elementary school, they were up at the crack of dawn. We didn't have much trouble getting them up. We wanted to sleep late. They were up early.
Well, I have one that's like that and one that's not. Like, I got one who'd be on board, and I've got one that you would not want to see at 7:30 in the morning at the HOD.
You're right. Yeah. But, you know, we see more, again, that kind of how those, you know, cycles flow. The younger children do tend to be up early, and we can put them to bed at seven or eight o'clock at night, and they'll sleep through the night. Yeah.
For the most part.
But, as far as the research goes, the research talks about the late start time and the benefit mostly for high school. You can see some marginal events for those upper-middle school students, but they don't have... There's no study that I have seen that says that there is a benefit for elementary children coming earlier.
Is there anything that says it's a detriment for them to come early?
Yeah, same. Just it probably hasn't been studied.
Yeah. While we have, it's anecdotal. I will say that the committee that I worked with this, the first year, was very passionate about doing the research on this, and they looked at the districts that had already done the flip in Massachusetts and contacted them. They interviewed superintendents that had already done this. They talked with, you know, principals, and what they heard was that there really was... You know, anecdotally, it was kind of a status quo. The flip happened. Families were concerned about it at first, but once they got used to it, it was fine, and they didn't see any real negatives. They didn't see any compelling positives at the elementary level. The benefit came later.
And a lot of the districts, though, again, as Paul said, when they're self-contained and they're able to adjust all the schools, a lot of the districts, the early elementary start time is 8:20 or eight o'clock or something like that. There aren't any that are as early as 7:30.
Exactly.
So, it was less of a shift. If you're going from 8:45 to an 8:30 start, it's not dramatic.
Right.
Whereas ours would be an hour and a half.
They use that middle school as the buffer there.
Right.
And we just... We don't have that ability because of the way we use the buses.
All right. So, what are our next steps then from here, as we're talking, this is a long-term process?
So, what we... I guess what it really comes down to is this. If we hear from the elementaries that they're all on board to do a deep dive, to look at this in greater detail, then the committee will come together again, and they'll continue to work on all of these problems that you've mentioned to try to come up with a greater plan. If we hear from the elementaries that they feel that the hurdles are significant enough that they can't get behind the initiative, we respect that, and I would say that King Philip would not be moving forward with this, other than next year, when we are putting a bid proposal together again for another three-year contract, we will put in multiple scenarios, one being, what would this look like if we go it alone and adjust the times, and see if it really is as big a financial impact as they said to us in a conversation. You know, once they actually stop looking at the numbers and looking at maybe their other contracts, even though we're not, say, sharing buses with Norfolk anymore, maybe we now can share them with tri-county. And so, that alleviates our costs, and then now Norfolk ends up sharing with somebody else, and, you know, something works out. But they're not willing to do that kind of work for us right now, because it was two years, one year away from the contract.
I don't think we could answer the question at all right now in that we don't have access to... We have looked at the data. We don't know anything one way or the other right now.
I think we should put it on a agenda for a future.
Yeah, I think this is going to be...
I'd possibly get some community feedback. I...
At some point, definitely.
But I think, too, even without the community feedback, I don't think that we can necessarily give an answer until we logistically know how we could absorb the issues with afternoon aftercare, too. I mean, we have a...
Well, I think before we even get that far, there's certain... There's certain things that we would have to consider, whether or not we could even move forward. I mean, first of all, our contract has defined work hours. You'd have to renegotiate a start and end time. There isn't... We don't have other comparison districts that have a start time this early that we can evaluate impact. There... As much as the research supports that early start time for the middle and high school, which I think is great, there isn't any documented benefits for the younger students. So, I think we'd have to really evaluate whether it's realistic before we engage community feedback, because I don't want people to be overly concerned about it if it's not even a possibility based on contract obligations and other costs that we would have around childcare and things. So, I think we'd have to do a little further study of those variables first before we can respond.
So, one scenario is, there's a flip of schedules. There's no real cost impact, but there's a lot of other peripheral impacts, many.
Exactly, many.
The other is a major cost increase with all those same ripple effects.
Well, no, the major cost... The major cost we took off... King Philip took off the table.
Okay.
They recognized that... They just say... I'm sorry, go ahead, Jeff.
I was going to say, my assumption also from that flip is that there probably are some costs. We just don't know what those are yet because of contracts, because of shift in SAC costs and the availability.
Well, and it's not even the cost of SAC. It's the fact that we just can't have more SAC right... Like, there's nowhere.
There's no room in the...
There's nowhere.
There's no space, yeah.
And that's what I'm saying. We won't know if we would even have... Even if everything worked out, and we could do it, and we could negotiate a contract where work hours were going to change, if you're telling a parent who is used to having the school day end at whatever it is now, 3:15, so, I mean, I work, so I don't even know what the defined end time is at this point, but like, that is now moving to a point where, you know, your day is going to move earlier by an hour for your five-year-old or your six-year-old. You know, I mean, you have to... You know, there's no... You can't have that conversation without a conversation of childcare, and you can't have the conversation of aftercare, because you just can't have it, because there's nowhere to put them.
Right.
So, until we know if we're going to have more space, there's no...
And we have to even, before we even start, evaluate whether the association was even receptive to the idea of changing work hours per the contract.
Right.
So, I think there's other things we'd have to look at.
There's a lot of...
And maybe we could set that for a future meeting. I do think if we rebid, as you talked about, when we rebid the bus contract and you present multiple scenarios, what it would cost if you... An independent contractor for the buses versus shared, we're going to have to mirror that in the elementary bid.
Exactly.
Because you might get low pricing, but then our pricing doubles if we still have the same. So, we're going to have to work collaboratively on the bid and look at the data from both for cost impact.
I think Jeff would agree with me that King Philip was very clear, that committee, that they were not looking to cause difficulty or harm to the elementary districts. I mean, they recognized that, and when they saw that there was this kind of ripple, it causes to go in a different direction. And recognizing the variables, the many of them that you would have to overcome, we... Before we asked so many people on committees to do so much work, only to come back and say, wow, that's so much, we don't want to go down that road, I think it was a fair question to say, is there an appetite for us exploring that to that level, or do the elementaries feel this is just too much for them to take on? And that's really what, you know, we're looking for next, I think.
Just out of curiosity, was any investigation done on buying 24 buses, capitalizing them, depreciating them over however long buses are depreciated? Just curious.
Hire your workforce of drivers.
Yeah, and someone to manage them.
Some districts have done that. Foxborough owns their own buses.
When I was in Avon, you know, my previous district, we ran our own buses, but Avon was four square miles, so it was four buses, not 24.
One bus per...
I'm going to be very honest with you. It was not talked about in detail as far as, you know, KP's school committee goes. Personally, it added a whole other department and a whole other dimension to what we were doing. And then KP would still have to find a place to house 24 buses. So, there's... Yeah, there would be a lot to that, but it's an interesting proposal, Paul, that I certainly could bring back to...
I don't know what the bus costs or what the maintenance of the bus costs.
Yeah. We leased. We leased them on a three-year lease, just like the...
I think the liability insurance is the big.
We had insurance. We had a terrible problem...
For the separate, sub-separate employees that you're going to have.
Yeah, with drivers, getting the drivers as well.
If you're transporting minors, you have to have a certain policy level, much more so than anything else.
They have a certain license that they have to have, and there's training that goes along with that.
But it would be worth, you know, looking into for long-term, because as I said, there are other districts that do run their own transportation and have a transportation... I mean, it's...
And it's something, actually, you know, as far as that goes, that the four districts at some point could have more conversation about, because even if you didn't run the yellow buses, running sometimes the specialized transportation, when you have in-district, at least, you know, travel.
The vans.
The vans. Yeah. We found that, you know, so it's a separate conversation for another day, but it's...
To rent four hours a day, 24 buses.
Very good idea.
So, we'll discuss it further in a future agenda and get back to you.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you so much for coming.
I did have one question is, is it just strictly an ask for the flip, or are there midpoints, like 15 minutes earlier, half an hour earlier, 45 minutes earlier? Is that... I never really got a feel for what the ask was, other than it feels like it's a flip or nothing.
The basic assumption, Jeff, is that we have... We need an hour of pickup time in between. So, whatever time Norfolk said that they were willing to start at, so whether it's eight o'clock, 8:30, you know, 7:30, that adds an hour to us. So, I mean, if Norfolk came back and said, we would consider this, but we would only consider it if our students arrived at 8:30 rather than 8:50, well, that's... We take that back to King Philip, and we look to see, is this reasonable? What does that give us? Because it still has... At this point, it has to flip. It's the only way to do it. Now, the other issue, as I said, is, you know, we're talking about flip time. The only other issue that I can see, and it's not one that I think would be palatable for you, is lengthening your day, because we have a half-hour window in the morning. If we had... If your day was a half-day, a half-hour longer in the afternoon, we'd have that window. We could, you know, butt them right to each other, you know, get rid of the half-hour in the morning and then go later. But again, that means... That's a contractual piece. You're not going to ask staff to work a half-hour longer without them asking to be paid for that.
Yeah, go back to your homework thing. I think it's a better one.
So, like I said, it's really easy to list all of the hurdles here. It's much harder to come up with all of the solutions, yeah, at this point.
And because of the different lengths of day, we only have that half-hour gap in the morning, and there's no gap in time in the afternoon.
Yeah.
All right, we'll get back to you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's it? Okay.
All right. Budget. Next, we have... Did anybody have any other comments on the early start time? So, we'll put it on a future agenda, and we have Todd up next for the budget update.
Yeah, if we put that on agenda, we may want to block that as being the...
Yeah, and I can gather some other data for the committee to consider.
That's obviously going to be a fairly lengthy discussion, and that may be something of NTA as a participant as well, because that's... There's a lot of moving parts with that.
Yep.
Franklin consulted the teachers.
Hi, Todd.
Good evening. I'm going to make this real quick.
Awesome. Great.
Thank you. Good evening thus far. I'm just going to give the committee a brief update on how we're looking through the second quarter of the fiscal year, six months into the fiscal year, four months into our school year. And as you know, this is more for our viewers at home, our operating budget is $12.7 million. The lion's share of the pie, the green portion of the pie, is the resources the committee has allocated toward direct instructional services, and we'll go through each. Each wedge of the pie relates to a major state expense functional area, and we present it to you in this way to fall in conformance with your budget policy.
Could I just...
Of course.
One point of clarification, since you mentioned you're adoring fans in their homes watching this. When we're saying instruction, we mean direct instruction. We do mean teachers, right? That's just so everyone's...
So, I've got a... Thank you. I've got a slide for each wedge of the pie that we'll...
Okay, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead again.
I will outline. So, it is more than teachers, but no, it's an excellent question.
This is a slightly different graphic than we used for our other presentation, because this is according to state budget code.
Okay.
Not necessarily function.
And it ties to your budget policy, where we have to maintain a certain actual-to-budget within each of these categories, unless we have the committee's approval to do otherwise. So, the district administration, which is just under 4% of our operating budget, this represents district leadership, the school committee, superintendent's office, the business office, human resources, and district-wide legal services. Formerly, we also included what was referred to as district technology. Now, this is more just district admin technology. So, the state has sort of changed the way we report technology, and the lion's share of our expense for tech, you'll see when we get down into facilities and operations. So, at this point, I'm projecting that most of our $502,000 budget is allocated and should be spent on salaries and contractual obligations. be spent on salaries and contractual obligations. We have, the one variable, primary variable in this area is legal services. We've got negotiations this year, which may or may not incur some legal expense for the district. That happens every three years, so that's potentially an impact this year. We also, from time to time, have special education cases that require some legal assistance, of which, you know, we are involved with some this year. So that's the area we're looking at. If things go, fall well, we'll have a little bit more savings in this area. But right now, we're anticipating we're going to expend most of what the committee has allocated. Instructional services, again, the lion's share of our operating budget. So this includes the principals' offices, all of our teachers and specialists, professional development to support those staff people, instructional materials, texts, related software, and our guidance and psychological services. To date, at this point, I'm projecting about a savings of about $14,600. As you can imagine, with 10 and 1/4 million, there are a lot of areas within this section of our budget. Some are doing well, some are, have minor shortfalls. Most of the savings here is related to staffing change we had in the psychological services, in our psychologists. And we're doing favorably in some areas. We've got some variables that will play out as the year goes along, such as substitutes, the need for, right now, for example, with regular ed subs, we're tracking pretty well, but we're utilizing more subs for special, to support special education at this point in the year.
Todd, can I just jump in there?
Please.
Just for the committee to note, we have had a really difficult time, and this is regionally, not just Norfolk, hiring and retaining substitute teachers. So we're tracking well, not because the incidence of teacher absence have gone down, but we have a lot of days where we are pulling people, principals are covering. We just can't get bodies into the building. So that, you know, in an ideal situation, we may not be tracking as well as we are. So I just want people to be aware of that.
Yes. And the other area where, as I point out at the bottom of the box, that we're monitoring and working with the sped director is support, home services, additional services for students. From time to time, we try to bring students back. It's not just about outplacing students, and then there may be some for additional services to support those student needs in district. The 3,000 series, this is, in terms of dollars, it's, this is, for us, it's primarily our transportation expense. It also supports our health and nursing offices in each building. To a much lesser degree, food service. Currently, the budget supports just the cost of lunchroom monitors, and the food service program itself covers all of the other related costs. But as some of you veterans will recall, Thomas, we have had years where we've had to subsidize the food service program, which has required action by the school committee later in the year. At this point, I'm projecting a shortfall in this area of just over $4,000. And there are two variables that impact this. One is we've got a placeholder for a special education outplacement that we have not accessed yet, but we may access later in the year. And we also have been impacted, most recently, by some homeless transportation expense, which we did not budget anything for this year. So the homeless expense is being offset by some savings in special education transportation.
And that's been a significant increase for us this year, in the number of students that we're transporting under McKinney-Bentow.
Yes, and we've just learned within the last week that we may have additional impacts. So when I come before you next quarter, you know, these numbers may change a bit. And again, to the committee's policy, if we exceed $5,000 shortfall, we need to come to you and ask for a transfer or some guidance on how you'd like us to deal with that, to stay within your budget policy. Operations and maintenance, this is our custodial services. Some of our maintenance, as you know, we're partnering with the town now with the townwide facilities program. So certain maintenance that historically was in our budget is now in the townwide facility budget. We still report that at the end of the year to DESI, whether it's incurred through the town budget or the school budget. But it's a bit less on our end, and that's primarily in the area of HVAC and utility, some of the utilities, particularly electricity. And now, this year, heating fuel is largely in the townwide facility budget. What's changed in this area in the last year or two is that now, most of our technology, networking, and infrastructure costs and staffing, the state wants us to report in this area, where historically, some of that was in the district. First slide we looked at in the 1,000 series. And at this point, I'm projecting we'll, we're pretty much right on budget in this area. We've had maintenance issues at the day school, as you know, in recent years. So that's a variable that we keep an eye on. Right now, we're doing okay in that regard. There is an interest, as Matt has talked with you about, of recommissioning systems. Actually, at both schools now. And in terms of technology, we've developed a five-year replacement plan, but we don't necessarily have the funding to meet all of that plan. And that's one of the things the committee's been supportive at year-end, to help us get more Chromebooks for the classroom and those sorts of things, when we've had savings toward the end of the year. Fixed charges, this is for retirement insurance and other contractual obligations. Very modest here. Our budget's $35,500. We have had professional staff indicate, we've had three staff people indicate the possibility of entertaining retirement at the end of the year, and there are buybacks that are built into this projection. Our sense, very recently, is that most or all of those may not mature or happen for perhaps another year or two. So I suspect, when I come back to the committee, when we talk about the third quarter, we may have a more favorable balance in this area than the 11,000 I'm projecting at this time. I'm going to skip over equipment.
Stay there.
Well done there.
We don't do much in this area. And during my tenure, we've done actually very little in that, other than major building projects, of course. The last section is our outplace students, which is just over 2% of our operating budget. We, at this point, are, I'm anticipating having about $87,600 unused. Virtually all of this relates to the $85,000 placeholder that the town finance committee and town meeting allowed us to include in our budget, with the understanding that if we didn't need it, we would return these funds to the town at year-end, as we have in the last, at least, five or six years. As going forward, you might have recall, Ingrid told the selectmen last week when we met, that it's likely, based on the town's financial constraints for next year, that we will not be asking for a placeholder that will be budgeting for actual outplacements with no sort of buffer, if you will, for things that may change, in which case, we may have to go back to the town if circumstances change.
So if there was a lawsuit, and we lost, let's say, five, let's say, not that there will be, but let's say there's five.
Or even two.
That's outplacement, I mean, I know from special ed, out of district, it's like, tuition alone is 60 grand, plus tuition.
Transportation, right?
Transportation, yes. It's like, I don't know, anywhere, 85, 90, and up, depending on what the judge decides, you know, they can go, and we have no choice. But we have to legally pay for it.
Correct.
So what, we would be in financial.
We would have to go, no, we would have to go back to the town for an additional appropriation based on that, and it would have to be voted at a town meeting. We've done it once before, when we had to add a kindergarten session.
Yep.
Having the placeholder allows you to respond immediately. What we would have to do is, you know, depending on the timing of the school year, you might have to institute a budget freeze until you can go to the town and ensure you have an additional appropriation. It's something the budget committee looks at every year. If we put a placeholder in next year of $85,000, then we're going to be looking at reducing a teaching position. And that's not the position we want to be in. And that happens sometimes. That's not with a zero increase. That's, we have a lot of contractual obligations next year. We have an additional kindergarten that we have to add. So with all those costs, the budget committee has to decide, do you want to retain a placeholder, or do you want that to be a position? And knowing that we would have to go back to the town for an appropriation.
So you better tell a special ed department, be on their case.
Well, some of it you can't control. Like you said, if a child moves into the district that's already outplaced, you have to respond. But it is a budget choice that we have to make, and given the demands that we have for other costs, you know, I wouldn't feel comfortable having a placeholder at the expense of a position.
Is there any benefit to having sort of a partial placeholder, like instead of 85, say 40?
We've done that before.
We've done that in the past.
Yeah, and I think the budget committee will have to look at that when we look at other costs.
I mean, at least it wouldn't be as much of a shock, and we'd have some coverage should something happen.
Sure. We could even, and this may be a little extreme, but we could even pursue at some point what's referred to as a school stabilization fund with the town, where when the town had good years, they could set some funds aside, and then there'd be a collaborative vote with the selectmen and the school committee to access those funds specifically for these special needs cases.
And that might, long-term, be better than retaining the placeholders.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there any limit to what could go in there, in terms of like a dollar? I mean, I don't believe so.
I don't believe so. No, not to my knowledge. No, it does require town meeting to adopt it initially, and of course, funding would be through town meeting. But then, during the year, if there was a matter that we needed, you know, Jen's example, we could have a joint meeting with the selectmen and agree to release some of those funds to alleviate, rather than go back to town meeting for.
That's what makes me nervous. Well, and just to tie up the whole, and I know we've talked about this to anyone who will listen at this point, but historically, our arrangement with the town with respect to the placeholder is that in years where it is not accessed, it is returned to the town.
Yes, absolutely.
But also, at the same time, because the town has to have the available revenue to fund that, we have always been able to maintain the placeholder and still come in under 4.5%. So if you're at 4.5% with just fixed costs, then you're pushing into the 5%. So that's the difference. This year is unique in terms of our required costs.
But the town is used to considering transfers for various departmental needs, you know, the most common being snow shortfalls, you know, in bad winters. But, and the fact that we do this together quarterly, we'd be, you know, we'd be sort of ahead of it and be proactive about it. So in summary, at this point, I'm projecting about $107,000 surplus, if you will. $87,000 with the out-of-district tuitions, so all but $20,000 in effect. And in the other services area, at this point, we would typically have some transportation savings. It's just being.
Absorbed by those conditions.
Absorbed because of the homeless transportation matters we're dealing with. But again, that may improve as the year goes on. So Todd, if you don't get those retired, those three retirements you potentially mentioned, so within that fixed charges section, set 11, I mean, is it? Instead of 11, it could be as high as 30.
Could be as high as 30, okay.
Yes.
So our best, nothing else changed? Our best case scenario is essentially 126 and some change?
Yes. Yes, sir. Yep. That's fair to say. Yep. And we would be committing the 87, or 85.
Would be back to the town.
And then the remaining 40-odd, the committee could consider to use Chromebooks or, you know, some other thing to help the gods. We've talked about this in the past, and I know it's getting late. So I'll just give this committee a quick summary of our gift fund, which I know you like to see. So we started the year with nearly $42,000 in the gift fund. Through December, the committee had accepted just about $24,000 of donations, and we had expended just over $19,000 and committed another few thousand for some other classroom programs. So there's a balance of $46,000 at the end of December. And as I say, a lot of things are in progress. So typically, this balance goes down as we go through the year, and teachers access some of these funds for various special programs. That was quick, but.
Also, just a note within the gift fund, probably, you'd have to check my math, but I think about $5,000 of that is donations that were set aside for Gretchen Sullivan's memorial fund for a specific purchase. And they are, they have a committee thinking about how they want to use those funds.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, yes.
Great. Questions?
Do we have gift agreements?
I'm sorry, what?
Do we have gift agreements?
In what?
Define gift agreement.
Gift agreement is.
I agree to receive gifts.
When a donor provides a gift, there's certain terms of which the gift can be used
for, and it's in writing. It's a.
We did for the memorial fund, but not in general. A lot of them are like, some of it is, if you register your school for Target, and a percentage of the purchases come, and that goes to the gift fund. Sometimes the, we have an environmental company that sends a donation, so they don't, they leave it to the, yeah, LUDERS is on this month. They leave it open. But we can, if somebody wants to. Yes, if somebody wants to, they can, they can target it for a specific purpose.
Correct.
Okay.
And some of those teacher-proposed programs, you know, the one we do get, the grants or gifts, those are used specifically for, you know.
For that part. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Thanks, Todd.
Thank you. Okay, we have one other item that I had for tonight, and I'll try to highlight it quickly for you, because then we have policy updates. The bully prevention, bullying prevention and intervention plan is required by the state for every district to have. The state requires districts to review and update those policies and procedures biannually. We are slightly behind in updating and revising our policy and our prevention plan, because we were under the process of going through a social emotional program review. And part of this, part of the plan identifies your SEL learning programs, your curriculum resources. So we wanted to wait to finalize those before we updated the plan. So the current bullying prevention and intervention plan has been updated. We've incorporated all of our new programs and resources. We've also made revisions that are acquired by the changes to the law. So in this, we have additional resources, community resources listed. That's a new requirement of the bullying prevention law. We have also updated and modified our forms, so parents and other parties can report bullying online through an electronic form. Other than that, the collaboration with families, all of the core elements are basically the same. Just has updated curriculum information, some legal additions to the policy. I have a requirement to put this out for public comment. It went out in November, beginning of November, to public comment. I haven't received any feedback from the community. The plan was updated with input from school site councils, our guidance and adjustment counselors, based on the model plan provided by the state. I think it's in good shape and meets all of the legal requirements. So we need to have the committee review it and vote to approve the new bullying intervention, or the updated bullying prevention and intervention
Any questions on that, or? Again, most of it is defined in the mask general laws, the required components that are every district has to have.
All right, so we can just vote on this, isn't it?
Yep.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the bully prevention intervention plan as stated?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Great. That's it for me tonight.
All right, so moving on to committee reports. Probably King Philip talks about buses.
Did Mr. Sidney give you a report?
Yeah, nothing from King Philip. I was not at the last meeting, so.
Got it. Moving on to policy. Two third readings, correct?
Yeah, we did a first reading of the student submission to research studies. We don't currently have a policy on students taking part in research surveys, so this is something that we're looking at. And then we had some minor changes, incidental changes from mask regarding educational opportunities for children in foster care, military children, and equal education opportunities regarding new regulations from the Department of Ed around equity. Minor, minor incidental changes.
So we will be bringing drafts of those policies to the next school committee meeting. And for tonight, we just have the third reading on travel regulations and public solicitations in the school. There were no changes requested after the second reading, so we're ready to vote on those two tonight.
Okay. So we'll do these one at a time. So do we have a motion on, this is policy JAH, JHR, the student travel regulations?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And do we have a motion on policy KHA, public solicitations in the schools?
So moved.
Okay, good.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And skipping on to budget, I don't know if you guys have anything beyond what was just discussed?
No, unless there's any changes since last week, but we made a presentation to the select board as requested, some scenarios that we thought of, contingent on our budget development calendar, by presenting a draft of the budget by the next meeting.
Very good.
That's all.
All right. Moving on to accepting the minutes from the, is this correct, November 8th, or should this be December 10th?
It should be December 10th.
Did I flip the wrong line?
It should have been December.
It's December, what, I don't remember what the date.
I think it was the 10th.
It's the 10th? Is that somewhere?
December 10th, 2019.
Yeah, and I think the exhibit, the exhibit is correct in here.
Exhibit's correct, but I think the date on the agenda's wrong, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I was not at the December meeting, so I will not be able to vote. But do we have a motion to accept the minutes for the December 10th, 2019 meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand for me. And then we're looking at Tuesday, February 11th for our next meeting. Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Yep. And I think we are done, so barring anything else, we are adjourned. Whoa, we're not adjourned. Motion to adjourn. We need a motion to adjourn.
And make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Wow, you guys are on that one. Assuming there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Great.